Uh, we'll go ahead and get started off by saying that pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose name it is well. With your proceeding.
With very heavenly father, we've come to you this evening. We ask that you be with us, lead us and guide us in all discussions uh that we uh make wise decisions that will help further uh this community. And uh just make it more beautiful than what it is now. Help us to uh be good stewards of your funds and to lead us and guide us in always. We ask in your name. Amen. Kenny, tonight is a meeting for the uh we have Bailey, I have Dave Harding, myself, and I'm there in our clerk treasurer, Sandra Thompson. Set motion for approval minutes claim docket utility adjustments. I'm I'm excited looking for approval about a second. John made a motion, Dave seconded all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very near approved. Kenny with us please.
We had uh hundred ninety one sponsors last month. Nothing out of the ordinary. The um camera system that you guys purchased a couple of months ago are uh they're not active yet, but they're uh um still going through some of the licensing for the state. Camera throughout and soon as uh licensing goes through, then they'll be operational. So hopefully by next month, they'll be operational.
Other than that. Based on someone wondering what cameras are for.
There's a lot. But there's one uh one one fifty seven, there's one out of oh fifty four of ours. So. Fifty four east to west east. Right turn Warren Road. You can't miss them. They're probably open.
I drive back every day and I've missed them.
Well, they see you put it that way.
That's okay.
They will.
Yeah, well, you're right.
Um, anything else?
No.
Okay, Jay was going to not medical leave. For the street plantation department. Randy.
Uh, I have asked uh Riley Carroll to come as uh part of the street department uh issues tonight uh to uh ask him to discuss what would the situation we have on North Clinton Street uh will just be a good time. We're gonna cover that a little.
Listen, wait just a little bit on there. We'll come back to you. Uh, ran to a fire.
We had twenty one EMA runs and three fire runs.
Julie.
I have a report from Sarah said she's not here tonight. She said we have had over four thousand visitors from near and far. We've had visitors from Eastern Oakland, Linton, and West Virginia, Montana, and even Puerto Rico. They have hosted ten private parties. This includes our largest of the summer, Eastern Green Baseball slash Ball softball youth programs. The coordinator stated that kids are now signing up to play ball just because of the end of the year swim party. They've had twenty two more private parties scheduled and only have twelve spots open for reservations for the rest of the season. They have given twenty nine individual one-on-one swimming facilities. Aerobics and Zumba have been well attended. Lap swimming starts tomorrow, which yeah, and will continue each Monday and Wednesday morning. A poll was taken on Facebook with Facebook, which showed a lot of interest. They've had one free swim day and have three more on the schedule. Free swims are sponsored events and they appreciate those donors so much. They have a teen night and adult night on the schedule for July and will begin advertising for those soon. They have slumber six hundred hot dogs, five hundred pretzels, and sixty mini squirt guns. Lifeguards have had to do a handful of saves, but with quick response, it was nothing serious. They have received several compliments on the updates that have been. They have received eighteen new lounge chairs and twelve more regular chairs will be delivered this week. Thank you to the council for those. The handicapped a successful lift chair has cracked and broken off due to aging weather. Maintenance has locked, has looked into the cost of ordering a new one and should have that before. But I don't think that would be Maddie if he's not here, right? Have you guys heard anything about that?
The handicapped chair?
Yes.
Uh. Yeah, Jason said it was gonna be like thirty day delivery. I mean, it was.
Okay.
It was.
And then it says.
It'll be a while anyway.
The refrigerator hasn't been cooling as well as it should. But we'll be getting refrigerated with town hall to replace ours for Sandra. Thank you. And she has asked about if there's any way to get better wifi at the pool. Um, the efficiency of taking payments or to get into the pool and concessions is very slow and it backs up easily. Um, she said the concessions people have to come over to where the people come into the pool to get it to go through at times. And I think it's a Verizon that they have up there now. Do you know if there's anything we can do to?
Just wonder Julie if we can um have two, two of those up there.
Okay, is that something?
Cause we have an extra one. Cause the fire department used one and they went to Comcast. So I have the fire departments and we can try that.
Okay.
Like very stiffers.
Yeah. Yeah, we can try that, Julie.
Okay, all right. I'll have Sarah get with you tomorrow. Um, that's it.
Laura, Mr. Fox.
All right, um prisoners painted the swing frames, picnic tables, cleaned the benches and the floor in the elephant shelter house, and they also painted the gazebo floor. A thank you letter was mailed by uh to the crew supervisor thanking them for their work. Uh Ian Corbin, who usually gives his report, but since he's all done, he will not be coming anymore. He has completely finished his report. So the new sidewalks are in. The signs are mounted on high lit jackpost, which I think is so cool. Uh assistance from Rich Walls and is it Bryant? Is it Gillian?
Gillian.
That's how he pronounces it, Gillant. Thank you. Was appreciated. This project connects all of the ADA compliant sidewalks together, making a point two, three mile mini walking trail. Only thing that needs to be finished is sowing the grass seed. Uh Gina Langley from Bloomfield, the benefits of reading book club called requesting permission to put a library exchange box in the park. They will pay to have it installed and plan to keep books in it good for adults and children. If approved, I recommend that be put close to the restrooms because of the easy access to parking and the sidewalks. Brian Gillian also did the concrete base, which we asked him to do for the double riding toy. So that's all ready for installation. And I would guess since Jason's out that it's gonna be pretty tough to uh schedule out until he comes back. Is that a correct assumption?
Well, let's play that by year. See if we get those guys maybe to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what's involved. Is it a very involved process to?
Shouldn't just be a couple of bolts. Uh, I think there's about six bolts sticking out, so should be a big deal.
Well, we can talk about it.
My next room, my leave next week. I can do it probably.
Just call me. I know you called me to help you with the door, but I was on a conference call. Anyway, sorry. Um. If we could have two park benches that are uh they're all right now underneath elephant shelter house. If we could have two moved up by the exercise area uh for two different reasons. So people that are playing, waiting to play pickleball or parents that are watching the toddler area. I know I have gotten a phone call from a very hot mother because there was no place to sit down and there are no trees or shade.
I I think I'd occur with that. So I'm there one day and there's no place.
There's no place to sit, none. Um, which also made me think is, do we need to get one of those? What do they call it? Wings or a a very temporary shade until those trees grow up? Cause that's not gonna, that's gonna be a while. So that's just a thing to think about. Um, we also thank you to Gary for installing the vent on the gazebo. And we still need a fan unless something's happened between.
Not yet.
Yeah, okay. So I also had another thought on that. We'll talk offline on that one, but um. We need to schedule the installation of the tire climbing structure that myself and Tom were going to do, but I want to make sure that we've gotten the okay from the town for us to use the backhoe. I just need an audit for you. So we'll get that done within the next six to eight weeks. As long as we can use town's backhoe, cause ours is way too big.
I think we were gonna, didn't we say we'd like to see what it is, where we're thinking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, we never did do that. You know, I don't believe we did. Oh, sorry.
Oh, it's oh, it's quite all right, cause I need to be there with you. So you guys just tell me when it, when it's good for you and I can meet you now.
Correct.
Right? Uh, last thing is uh we submitted for a grant to RMC that because of the high applications for food pantries and other needy organizations, we didn't make it in this cycle, but they did suggest that we uh apply to next.
Once a year or that?
No, I think they do it more often than that because I see. Thank you. I will write that down and we'll watch for that uh.
And what I just happened to know that they just ended the grant cycle June eighteen, so.
Yeah, cause we submitted on the seventh, so quarterly. Okay, good to know.
And that's something we also we could submit to the foundation.
Well, see, I wonder if RMC and the foundation are two different things.
Two different things.
Yep.
And I almost think that the foundation that their grant cycle for this next year is already completed.
I saw in the newspaper where some have been awarded.
Just awarded their grant. We don't know if they do a year later or they do a quarter.
I think it's yearly.
Yeah, they're.
So we actually, we probably shouldn't submit to both. So RMC Foundation, so we'll see. Thank you. That is all I have.
I have a part of the um Sarah's letter that I forgot to read. So if I can read that, it said, we appreciate all that Matt and the maintenance crew has done every week. He is consistent and attentive and has done a great job taking care of the pool.
Okay. That's good news.
Yeah, it is.
Communication. Okay, well, we'll move on to all this. I like that also um thank Masonals for doing our live broadcasting tonight of our first meeting. So thank you for being here and setting it all up for us. You can feel like I did have a little things.
You're welcome.
Um. Move on to all this. We got the parking meters, charges and tickets. And we kind of possibly agreed um we're on the board with the new parking meters. And we just found that today that the shipping charges are ninety seven hundred dollars to ship them. And.
Where are they? I'll go pick them up.
That's why I told that lady. I believe they're being shipped to Wisconsin and from there to here, but still make that transition where they're currently at. I don't, I think they're coming from California. What I thought it was.
Yeah.
But they went there to uh do the programming stuff and so.
Did you say the gal was gonna check and see if they, they're gonna try to see what she can do to lower those prices?
So we can go ahead and, you know, do what we're gonna do with the price and then they lower it and that'd be just great. When we can uh get the other stuff away, all the charges and tickets, right? Cause we have a little bit of time to wait on that. We haven't ordered anything yet. One meter. So yeah, it'll take probably, I mean, she said about twelve weeks to get here. That's the maximum.
They're gonna put me about six to nine weeks, but they tell people twelve weeks. So they bringing up my horse or how they.
And I don't know, I haven't ever seen the shipping charge. And I guess we probably, I'll take a motion for the approval of the shipping uh charge. Let's be that with one nine thousand seven hundred.
I'll take a motion on the shipping and then not to, not to exceed ninety seven hundred dollars.
Except that, they made a motion uh not to exceed ninety seven hundred dollars. John uh seconded that motion. So any other discussion on it? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Supreme Court here will pass favor of that. All right, no business. Are you Rick?
I'm Rick. I'm sorry. I apologize. I went to town hall and uh
Oh.
As my wife accused me of not listening, I probably was told to go to come here. I apologize.
It's all right. You're okay.
So Ricky Anderson, Vergey, um we uh we do energy conservation projects, uh guaranteed savings projects. Um. We are uh we're based in Indianapolis. We're actually a larger company, but uh our Indiana office is in Indianapolis. Um, before I get into the handouts, I don't know if you guys um is it, does anybody work for the utility company before I get into my utilities deal? I have to watch myself cause sometimes uh so I don't know if you guys know or not, we're a regulated utility state. So all the states around us, Ohio, Michigan, uh Illinois, we're all deregulated, which means you have choices of who to buy power from. Um unfortunately, in Indiana, we're stuck with geographically who we have. So the rates have been going up significantly in the average rating increase over the past fifteen years. It's been six percent, but over the past probably three to five, it's been more in the fifteen to eighteen to twenty percent. You probably noticed it at home, obviously, or um if you guys are paying bills at any kind of a business. They're going up pretty significantly. So what we're trying to help you guys do is you're never gonna be able to totally get off the utility company, but we're trying to help you be a little bit more energy independent. So um the first, the first handout that I gave you talks about some of the things we look at in our projects. So we look at anything that's um utilizing utilities from light stage VAC. Uh, we do a lot of solar. So we've done, and we don't do the big farm field stuff. So I've gone into some communities and we're like, you know, we hate solar, we're not into solar. We don't do the big farm field stuff. Um, all of our stuff is associated with a facility um or a meter at a building. So um if you've looked at two uh the third and fourth um handouts that I gave you are from the city of Shelbyville and also from the city of North Vernon. Um Shelbyville's, we impacted that in fourteen different sites with solar. Uh, North Vernon, we impacted like twenty two sites. So um pretty significant uh savings from those folks. Um, the second handout that I gave you, um it's probably going away like now, um literally as we speak, it's this inflation reduction act. So this thing was in uh was brought into into uh existence two years ago uh by the Biden administration. What it basically did was said, hey, if you put any solar in your buildings, you get uh a minimum of about thirty percent back on your investment. So you do a million dollar solar project, you get a check back from the federal government for three hundred thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, when Trump came in, he said, uh, we're laughing this off and this big beautiful bill that's happening like literally like right now. Um, part of that is going to be uh taken off. So I have it in here, but um and I'll talk about it till it's gone. Uh, if that happens with the legislative, the the federal legislation probably goes away in September. So the problem is, you know, if we do our assessment, come back to some finding street guys, um it's probably not gonna be around, but I I bring it up just cause it currently at six, it's at six thirty on Tuesday night. It's still, it's still there. Um, so what we do for you all is we come in and do a assessment. So we look at um, we get some billing information from uh the town. Um, we do assessments, no costs to Bloomfield. Uh, we would come back with recommendations and we have some things like, hey, um, you can do lights in this facility. You could do HVAC in this facility. Um, potentially could do solar, solar wastewater is the big caveat. Um, we're doing a ton of those type of projects uh around the state. Uh, that's probably seventy five or eighty percent of your, of your bill and cost is at your wastewater plant. Um, if we can impact that uh significantly, let's say twenty five to fifty percent of your bill, um that's pretty significant. So we do an assessment, then cost of town, anything to do the assessment. We come back with uh recommendations and you guys can decide, um, yes, we'd like to do something, no, we wouldn't. Um, I talked about that guaranteed savings at the beginning. There's guaranteed saving legislation, state of Indiana allows you guys to go out and do these things, be an RFQ or an RFP. Uh, it's kind of a different way to buy things. The traditional way to do stuff now is that you probably have worked on is hire an architect, engineer, uh put plans, specs together, uh take a little uh advertise, take a little bid. Uh, our projects are no change order checks. Um, we've done a couple here locally. When I say local Bloomington, uh we did Madison schools, a big project in Madison schools. We're also maintaining uh Bloomington's all of their solar, another company put it in, but we're maintaining it. Uh Shackhamack School, Shackhamack kind of west of here a little bit.
Hmm.
We do a pretty decent sized project in Shackhamack and uh currently just got contracted in the city of Brazil to do uh solar and street lighting for those folks as well. So we do a lot. We've done a ton of projects in the state. And um I'd love to help you guys.
So these are panel panels on the roof, is that?
Potentially. It was, we need three places to put a roof, uh ground space, or uh we put car canopies. Uh, I don't know if you guys have flown in and out of Evansville's airport lately or have seen it. We put a bunch of car canopies in front of uh their airport terminal for parking. But it's pretty, it's really impactful. Um, if we can, again, like I said, if we can impact, you know, pretty let's say half of your bill, I can't guarantee that I'm gonna be able to do that until I do the analysis, but um if we can potentially, you know, impact twenty five to fifty percent of your bill, especially at a wastewater plant, um it's pretty significant.
I wouldn't see no problem in assessing or analysis things. Sounds like it has some great potential. Um. I don't know. How long will it take you to do the assessment?
About six, six weeks to two months.
Just uh you look both inside and outside, uh probably changing light fixtures that like LED, you know, type of thing.
The LED, if you got any HVAC, it still has any R twenty two refrigerant. Uh, we look to get that's, you can't, you can still get it. It's kind of a black market for it, but now we're on like two diff, two refrigerants down from the R twenty two, but a lot of folks still have R twenty two, so. Yep.
All right. Any, any cost for the assessment?
No, sir. I hate to use the word free, but I need a little information and uh if you get somebody that can, you know, get me into lock closets. I mean, most of the time somebody just sends an email out and says, hey, Vergey, it's gonna be. get me into locked closets. I mean, most of the time somebody just sends an email out and says, hey, Virge is gonna be around today looking at stuff. And if somebody can just get me into some, you know, locks. A lot of times there's a lock closet or something, but that's about it.
Just get an, get an idea and see. So uh, that architects, if we've got enough make it more opportunity or billions that are while and you're while.
We do hundred thousand hour projects. We do ten million hour. I mean, it's all over the place. So have you guys ever been to St. Mine, right? Arch Abbey?
Yeah.
In my Catholic. So we just were finishing up a uh, we've done about twenty million dollars with them. They've got a huge solar field now in front of their arch abbey. Uh, we also did a big geothermal uh uh field underneath a soccer field. They're, they were playing soccer. They have a little vast year now they're playing soccer again. But uh, really, that's a really neat example.
Folks do the field uh west of Tipton, Indiana?
Uh, yes, we did tip. Yep. You familiar with the area?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's ours.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. So you guys, you wanna do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Any timeframe, uh? You just need to give back, I don't know if you perfect did or you.
I have, I have a development engineer that comes around with me. So we'll walk, we'll walk while you're, so you've got uh, here, uh, Town Hall. What other, what other, I mean, we, I heard pool. Um, Shelbyvilles, we did uh, we did some stuff at your pool.
Park, water tree.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Well, look, at any place you're paying a bill. You're, are you all due here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, in town.
In town.
In town. Are you RMC outside?
Yes. Yes.
Well, that's, that's not always good either, but they does somebody work for you RMC and everyone always saying that?
No.
Okay. That's why I always ask for more because sometimes I'm not speaking real highly of the utility companies.
I would love to have a choice.
How about less? How about less? Uh, well, the problem with Indiana is it's, it's like fifth, uh depend, uh coal plants across the country. And unfortunately, even when they shut one down, they will throw that on the rate payer. So we're just, our utility lobbies here are so strong that we're gonna be one of the last states to deregulate, unfortunately.
Just, I guess let us know whenever you're ready to head this way, we'll, we'll coordinate.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll call and.
Town Hall and Sandra and.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Um, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You don't have to stay around. You know what's there. You can stay and listen.
I'm fine.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead. We'll go ahead and we'll rally now and kind of.
Okay.
Rally the terror. How you doing?
I'm good. Are you some news for us? Well, I mean, I don't know. It's more mass, uh shumbled the third day, but we got two sea holes around the streets of we can with the sandberry line. It's beautiful. It's actually plastic. Found out that wasn't possible and then so we just got a small hole in the asphalt and hydro rescue it down. Found a storm line and nobody even been there. But it's just bad shape. It's, I think it was twelve inch. We didn't make the diameter. But it's roughly twelve inch, but single wall, corrugated pipe, it's solid, but super thin, you know, that should be like an inch twelve uh double wall, what it should be. But it's keen to the top and it's got holes in it and everything else. So but nobody knows where the inlet is with the outlet, which is sounds extremely strange, but uh, nobody knows it's even there. So we're trying to figure out today.
Does it even use some wonder then or or is it just?
Well, it gotta, it had to pull, you know, some water had to go down it.
Stormwater.
Yeah. Cause it, I slid a plate over the road Saturday, today it was considerably worse, you know, when we pulled the plate out of the bed. But, and we were going tomorrow and just gonna, can we try and camera it? We can't because we get twenty feet in and it's corrugations and it stops. We're having to come bring a remote control vehicle and locate it and find it and then try to inspect it because we we seen several feet of it. That's it's just in bad shape. So it's shumbled very soon today. Not sure what the what to do. The uh situation.
We don't know how long, you know, where it starts and where it ends. So and that brings right down the middle of the of the road right along with the uh, with the sewer line is. And so we can't tell yes, it's cracked all the way through and that, that's what the camera hopefully will tell us if we
Yeah.
get inside there and see.
Yeah.
Don't, Jason, I do. Um, if.
I, I talked to him today. Cause he's, nobody's aware of it. What it is. It's obviously a storm line, but I mean, that's just odd to not know the inlet and the outlet, where it's at.
Yeah, cause I mean, he's got maps of.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure.
Turn over this.
Yeah, he's like, oh, hey, he like all this stuff. Talking about it and he's like, uh, with all of it again, he's not, I'm not seeing them. So it's an odd situation. And it's not good. That pipe shouldn't have, it should have heavy, like bedding material on it. And it should go around. It's just, it's like a stretch scratcher all along the top of it. And then we, well, we made two holes today. There were another hole and I think it was just bad. And had it, yeah, I, I wasn't up there on the second one, but I think it had tunnelled. There was a water leak or something out there. And it had tunneled under the road to the next hole.
So the same I will say in line?
Yeah, yeah, they're probably twenty five, thirty foot apart. But now it's tunnel, basically it's connected the holes under the road. So it's just like when you, you know, you put a Band-Aid on, what do you do with this thing? You know, do you, there's lots of things. Don't think, I mean, it's not very deep. It's only four feet deep. That's nothing, but uh you know, everyone's parallel with that whole nice framing of road up through there. It's not very good.
Cool. But you got, we'll just hear those on the show. Well, thanks for the information.
We ought to know more.
Thanks for the information.
I mean, we'll know a little more tomorrow, but even then, okay, there's gonna have to be heavy uh, city.
Okay.
I don't, it's not gonna get better. So but at least we would know footage and know where it's at and try to, you know, you guys want to replace it or you know, even look at some other options if not big enough.
We'll probably discuss some of that here later.
Excellent. We'll be out there any month. So that'll tell a lot. So.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks for our excitement. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, lady. I'd be interested. Table both of those. Sit. Okay. I'm gonna try to be emotional with that. I'll make a motion that we table both of tornado siren item and the disaster fight. Okay. With it, but we can't, we we need to make, I guess at some point in this test. The, the current process, how, how it's currently working and if we need to make. Yeah, I'm gonna get some information from Sam if you guys talk to him earlier about it. So yeah, we, her heads together.
I don't think we're ready to take any decision on any ordinance or any plan till we, again, meet with Kenny. So yeah, I'd like to. I did a thing for some of that.
I'd say to them, that's good. They made a motion to table and sort or